All right, we'll go ahead and start the Planning Commission meeting for July 13th. I hope everybody had a great 4th of July and welcome to this afternoon Planning Commission. So first is the adoption of the agenda. Commission members, have you looked at the agenda? We'll need a motion to adopt the agenda. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it. We have adopted this agenda. Item C, which is the approval of the June 22nd, 2017 minutes have been given to you prior to the meeting and we will need to adopt those minutes. Are there any questions, additions, edits? We'll need a motion to adopt the minutes. There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose? Ayes have it and those minutes have been adopted. Now we're on item D, which is the recognition of the council members and I did see one council member here. Councilmember Nick Leonardo, would you like to? Okay, all right, councilman, thank you. And now, I didn't see any other council members, I want to make sure we don't miss anybody. I see a lot of formers, but not any. Now we're on item E, items for deferral withdrawal. Bob?
Yes, starting with item number one, items for deferral. Case 2016 SP-098-001. This is a request to rezone from specific plan to a new specific plan zoning district for properties at 910 and 912 North Second Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. Next item on the deferral list is item number two, case 2017 SP-005-001. This is the delivery at Fifth and Monroe SP to rezone from MUN to SP zoning and the staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item three, case 2017 SP-058-001. This is a request to rezone from R10 and R15 to SP zoning at 1811 Kimbark Drive and the staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th Planning Commission meeting. And I'll note on item three that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is item four, case 2015 S-165-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create one lot on property at 2044 Straightway Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item eight, case 2017 Z-037 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from CS and RS5 to RM20A, MULA, R6A, and RM9A for various properties south of East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. Next item is item 9A, case 2017 CP-004-001. This is the Neely's Bend Community Plan Amendment at 1133, 1145, and 1201 Neely's Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. The associated case is 9B, case 2017 SP-049-001. This is a request to rezone from RS10 to SP zoning on properties at 1133, 1145, and 1201 Neely's Bend Road and the staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. And the third associated case is 9C, the PUD cancellation request on the same properties at Neely's Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. Next item on the deferral list is item 10A, case 2017 CP-010-002. This is a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan and the staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is the associated rezoning with that case is item 10B, case 2017 SP-045-001. This is a request to rezone from RM20 to SP on property located at 2041 Overhill Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Commission meeting. Next item is item 15, case 2017 SP-035-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to SP zoning on property located along East Trinity Lane to allow for 190 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 18, case 2017 SP-056-001. This is a request to rezone from CS and RM2 to SP zoning at 3711 Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Commission meeting. Next item is item 20, case 2017 SP-066-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to SP on various properties along Meridian Street and Edith Avenue and along Lishy Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th Commission meeting. Next item is item 21, case 2017 S-120-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots at 621 39th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th meeting. Next item is item 28, case 2017 Z-075 PR-001. This is a request to apply the contextual overlay district to various properties along Nob Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 10th meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item 29, case 2017 Z-079 PR-001, a request to rezone from R8 to RS 7.5 zoning for properties along Cantrell Avenue, Carden Avenue, and Leonard Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 27th meeting. Those are all the items for deferral.
Thank you, Bob. So commissioners, let's go through these real close. Bob, make sure I'm right, so for the record. Item 1, item 2, 3, 4, 8, 9A, 9B, 9C, 10A, 10B, 15, 18, 20, 21, 28, and 29. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it and those items will be deferred. Next is, we're on item F, consent agenda.
And then, item 26 is just a reminder.
Hold on one second.
And the Twin Hills people want to defer. That's one, they just got a text, so let me pull that.
I think we have one more item for deferral. Do you want me to get to that after the consent or?
No, let's go ahead and consider that item. If that's okay with commissioners, let's do that and then we'll, so without objection, go ahead.
Okay, item 16, it's my understanding that the applicant would like to defer item 16, which is case number 2017 SP-053-001. This is the Twin Hills SP. This is a request to rezone from R20 to SP zoning on property located at 2133, 2135, 2135B, E Hill Drive, and I guess East Hill Drive unnumbered and Twin Hills Drive unnumbered. And they would like to defer one meeting to July 27th?
Yes.
Or, sorry, August 10th.
All right, so let's make sure the applicant is okay with deferring to August 10th, just to make, we'll put it on the record, that way we're not doing anything we're not supposed to. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm here representing DOMA's partners, the current owner and developer. We're fine with deferring to the August 12th meeting. I understand there's some neighbors and we'll be outside if they'd like to initiate some additional conversation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so you've heard to add item 16 to the deferral list. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on adding item 16 to the deferral list? Seeing none?
I have a question about the deferral, and is it a reason why it's deferred?
Well, the applicant just said that the reason that they wanted to defer is that they understand that there's some community members that want to have a further conversation and so they're deferring it to allow the opportunity for that conversation to go on. That's my understanding, is that correct? And they'll be out in the hallway if y'all want to talk to them.
You'd be willing to give us that?
No. No, you can't. What I would suggest to y'all is to, the applicant is right there, he's raising his hand in the back, and if y'all will just step out and talk to him, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, so you've heard, there's been a motion and a second on item 16 to defer. Any other discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor of deferring, say aye. Oppose? Ayes have it, that item is deferred. And if y'all could step out, that would be great. Thank you. Now we're on the consent agenda.
Okay, and before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the record, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item number five, case 2017 S-012-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1227 Old Hickory Boulevard. This is the Binkley Property Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance to the side lot line requirement. Next item on the consent is item six, case 2017 S-082-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property at 227 Marcia Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item seven, case 14881P-001. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a planned unit development overlay district located at 201 Grisard Avenue to reduce the number of mobile home units from 276 units to 155 mobile home units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 11, case 2017 Z-018TX-001. This is a request to amend Chapter 17.37 of the zoning code, which is the downtown code, to update and clarify standards pertaining to sub-district boundaries. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 12, case 2015 SP-005-005. This is a request to amend a specific plan on a portion of property located at Canridge Road to amend the signage standards. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself on item 12. Next item is item 13, case 2015 SP-068-003. This is a request to amend a specific plan on property located at Pettus Road to permit the use of brick, stone, cement board, cultured stone, and/or wood on 100% of the front facade and side facades of the buildings. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 14, case 2016 SP-039-004. This is a request to amend a specific plan on properties located at 1267 and 1271 Third Avenue South to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 17, case 2017 SP-054-001. This is a request to rezone from R6A to SP zoning on properties located at 530, 534, and 536 South Gate Avenue to permit up to 49 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 22, case 192-69P-002. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a PUD overlay district on property at 5716 Hickory Plaza to permit an addition to a warehouse. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 23, case number 38-87P-001. This is a request to cancel a PUD overlay district on property at 698 Putnam Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 24, case 2017 Z-052PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS5 to MUNA zoning on properties located at 1233, 1310, and 1314 Lishy Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And next item is item 25, case 2017 Z-069PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R6 to RM20A on property located at 517 Dr. DB Todd Jr. Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. And then, under Other Business, item 30 is to amend, an amendment to the rules and procedures of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 31 is a revision of the 2017 Planning Commission filing deadlines and meeting schedule and staff recommendation is to approve. Number 32 is the employment contract for Lee Jones. Staff recommendation is to approve. And number 36 is to accept the director's report and approve the administrative items.
All right, Bob, did you mention 26?
26 and 27 were pulled from consent.
26 and 27. And then, okay, so, all right, commissioners, so I believe this is right. Bob, make sure I'm not making any mistakes here. Items for the consent agendas, consent agenda, item 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, 13, 14, 17, 22, 23, 24, 25, 30, 31, 32, and 36. And then we, yes, sir?
I don't know if it's 26, what did I have too?
It got pulled, so it will be heard. It will be heard, there'll be a presentation today on it, and it is no longer on the consent agenda. So the consent agenda, these are items that will be approved if we vote for it. And Councilwoman Allen?
I have a question about item 30, if I can just ask it now or if we can?
Well, let's get it in proper order and then in discussion. So we'll need a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda.
It's on the consent agenda, can I ask my question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right now, after the motion and, yes. We're on discussion.
Okay. I just simply, that's the one where the executive director can make decisions about sidewalk variances, and I just wondered if there's any recourse, if the Planning Commission is interested in a particular case, if there's a mechanism to have it come before us instead.
I gotta get the language here in front of me to remember exactly the way this, I think the way it would work is that I would, that they would make the request to the department for the executive director to agree to a, vary the sidewalk requirements, and then y'all would have to, well, and then they would be included in the director's report. But I do see your point. And one of the things that we can do is to actually make those letters so that they're only, they only become applicable after adoption by the Commission, if that's what the Commission would choose to do.
Okay.
And then you'll have a chance to review them when the packet goes out.
Does that require change of language?
Carrie has her purse, her lips purse, so I'm sure she has something to say.
The timelines are such that those are often heard by the BZA before the next Planning Commission meeting, is the only caveat I would give to that.
So we're making a recommendation. We make a recommendation to the BZA and the BZA makes the final determination. Three of these came up in the last BZA meeting and myself and Michael Briggs appeared in front of the BZA and walked through each one of those cases with them to talk about the council's latest legislation regards to sidewalk requirements and the priorities that we do evaluations with and walked them through a new, and I don't know, have we submitted to the, Lucy, have we submitted to the Commission a copy of, or is it in the packet anywhere, a copy of those recommendations?
We have, I think this is the one that causes the system not much, so.
No, we have not in practice prepared a summary of our recommendations to the Commission, but we could certainly do so.
And while we do that, at least for some period of time and see how the Commission feels about that, and submit to the Commission, so to do this, it won't be on track with the Commission meetings, it'll run on a calendar that mirrors the BZA's meetings. And so when do we normally get those recommendations to the BZA?
So typically, we will send, if the BZA meeting is on a Thursday, we'll send the recommendations the Friday before. They tend to run on a bit of a tighter schedule and so as Director Sloan says, it doesn't sync up very easily with us to be able to prepare draft recommendations for your review and get them to the BZA on time. But I think what, as is suggested here, we could package the recommendations as part of the executive director's report. Once we have, but we would have already submitted them to the BZA, BZA would have already opined on those views.
And I think what might give it more meaning to your concerns, I think, is to send all the commissioners copies of our recommendations on the Friday that we send them to the BZA and then if something comes up that we're unaware of, that y'all have concerns about, you can communicate with my office and then we can appear in front of the BZA. They were very accommodating to meet with us the last time on all three and I think we had, and y'all can go back and watch that, but I think we had a very constructive dialogue with the board about our priorities and situations such as ADA requirements, sidewalk requirements near our transit corridors and some places that we're really going to require and not recommend any sort of variance for those locations or even in lieu fund in those locations because we think that's such a high priority. As opposed to a secondary street where there's steep topography and maybe some other issues like a line of trees that all might be taken out for a short run of sidewalk, that's the kind that we might give them a recommendation for in lieu instead of.
Okay.
But we'll send those to you on Friday.
Great, so I think with that procedure in place, then I'd be, I'm happy for that to stay on consent.
Okay.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? We'll make sure everybody's comfortable. All right, so again, just so we all know, after discussion, so 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, 13, 14, 17, 22, 23, 24, 25, 30, 31, 32, and 36, which would mean that we would consider items 19, 26, and 27, is that correct, after we adopt the consent?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so commissioners, you've heard the consent. Is there a motion to approve the consent? There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it and the consent agenda is adopted. Thank you, Bob. And so we are on item number 19. Yeah, let's make sure that if, in the audience, if you're not here for one of these three items, which is 19, 26, or 27, the item has already been taken care of, okay? On item 19. All the screens are off on this side, so if we could get Craig or somebody. All right. We'll get those fixed momentarily, y'all can look up here. Go ahead.
The next item is item number 19. This is a zone change request to permit four residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. This is a view of the existing site conditions showing the subject's site, which is currently a vacant lot. Zoning for this site is R10. Land use policy for the site consists of conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy areas. T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy encourages development that is consistent with classic suburban character and building form with opportunities for improved pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy encourages creative thinking when developing in conservation policy areas, particularly in locations with steep slopes, rivers, and The SP proposes two duplexes for, two duplexes for a total of four residential units at this site. This site consists of 0.42 acres of vacant land that's currently zoned in the R10 zoning district. The SP permits a maximum height of 35 feet and includes architectural standards for window orientation, glazing, and entrances. Ephys, vinyl siding, and untreated wood are prohibited exterior building materials. Vehicular access will be limited to the unimproved right-of-way adjacent to the site. The unimproved right-of-way will be improved according to alley standards instead of public street standards due to its width and the lack of connectivity it contributes within the immediate area. Sidewalks five feet in width and a grass chip of four feet in width are required along site frontage on Alpine Avenue. Architectural standards included in this SP will ensure the four proposed residential units to be within two two-family duplex structures, provide a well-designed development along Alpine Avenue that is consistent in scale and massing with the surrounding residential development. This proposal will serve as a transitional area for the cluster of two-family residential development uses immediately west of the site and the single-family residential developments immediately east of the site. Sidewalk improvements along Alpine Avenue will enhance the pedestrian realm by contributing to the existing sidewalk network within the area. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The proposed SP is consistent with the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy of the Bordeaux-White Creek Community Plan.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing, is the applicant in the room? Ma'am, thank you for coming. You'll have 10 minutes. How are you doing? And you know the drill, you'll have, you can save two minutes of the 10 for your rebuttal. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. Tiffany K. Partt, 2940 Baby Ruth Lane, Unit 5, Antioch, Tennessee. So this item was removed off the consent agenda, so I'm not going to say too much about it because the staff has given a great analysis of it and has offered approval with conditions. The property owners that I'm representing today grew up in this area and so this is a development that is close to their heart and so we wanted to do something that was consistent with the policy and consistent with what neighbors up in this area want to see. So the reason it's been pulled off consent agenda today is because we had a really successful neighborhood meeting and the neighbors really wanted to express that they want to see more development like this in the area. This is some of the first development in this area and so I think they just want to express that they want to see more development like this. We've got four units that will be facing the street, parking behind, we're building the alleys, so I think we've done everything that the T3 neighborhood evolving policy calls for. We also are addressing the conservation policy with the architectural design that works with the slopes on the site, so we're meeting the policy in that way. So we thank you for your support and approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. And if y'all would make sure that you state your name and your address. And then you have two minutes.
My name is Corey Jenkins. I live at 2715 Whites Creek Pike, Nashville 37207. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, I think she took most of my thunder. I'm here today because we had an incredibly successful community meeting. Unfortunately, in our community, many people have felt like their voices were unheard, like what they wanted didn't matter because they keep seeing other types of development come our way, affordable housing, low-income housing, workforce housing. And that's not something that the neighbors, the people in our community, really want. What we really want is what this development is, which is smart development that fits the community character, that raises the income level, the adjusted mean income for our area and our district. And it looks good. It makes you feel proud to say that you live in that area. Every single person that came to that meeting supported this development. We were proud that someone who grew up and lived here wanted to come back and invest here. We always want that. And we wanted to have an opportunity just to say to you all as commissioners that if you see something like that for our district, like what they're doing, we want that. Anything else? Low-income housing, multi-level, low, affordable housing is not what we're interested in. We don't think that that's what's best for our community. And we're going to oppose that at every single turn. Thank you for your time. I hope that you will approve this. And anything like this that you will continue to approve. And we're going to try to continue to build up our ability and our will to come and speak what it is that we want for our community because we think that's the best way to engage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Rebuttal if you want to or you don't have to. All right. We'll close this item for public hearing. And why don't we start over here with Vice Chair Farr. You want to start first?
I don't have any comments other than to thank the neighbors for coming out and reporting on a very successful community meeting. And it is great to hear people organizing and coming forward to speak what you want and contributing constructively to the conversation about what's best for improving your community. So thank you. And I'll certainly support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Well said. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Second. There's, okay. Let's make sure anybody else wish to speak? All right. Okay. Commissioner?
I'm appreciative of the neighbors and I'm not speaking against it. I'm just puzzled and I'm just looking for a reflection on how changing the zoning from, when we usually hear the opposite, right? We usually hear, hey, you can build four units on this property, but please don't because it'll encourage less. The range of incomes will be lower, which we like affordable housing. And if one house was on the, I guess I'm struggling with how that argument that going from a one duplex with one house on a lot to going to two makes it more amenable to the neighborhood. But that's just a, it says, you can't answer that question. I'm just, that's my, it kind of blew my mind. So can I ask the?
If I had to guess, Tiffany can probably answer that question for you.
Tiffany can bring that up. If you just clarify, just because it's not usually, the argument we usually hear is the others, the way, the way around. They're usually like, no, don't put more houses on.
So this property is in the Bordeaux-Whites Creek community. And Bordeaux historically has lacked the, the income needed to support retail and services that they very desperately want and need. So what they're looking for are housing that's going to bring more professionals back to the area, higher, potentially higher incomes back to the area that would then make it attractive to retailers, restaurants, and other services that they need in that area. So that is why it's kind of thinking more so, let's bring higher incomes, higher in-housing to this area versus lower-income housing to the area.
And that I understand. I guess I'm, I just struggle with why a higher income would want to go live in two units for four, for four units versus two. That's what I was struggling with. But I haven't seen the design plans and I'm all for.
Yeah, so, well, the, the units are about, designed to be about 1,800 square feet, three bedrooms, two bathrooms. So they're full, single-family, you know, type of housing, but just in an attached form.
All right. So I know you want to speak, but we closed the public hearing. I appreciate, and there's a question for the applicant. So there's a proper motion for approval? Is there a second? I see a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and it is adopted. We are on item number? 26.
Item 26.
Yep.
The next item on tonight's agenda is item 26. The request is rezone from IWD to RM 20A. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The properties are located on the south side of Cherokee Avenue, mid-block between Ellington Parkway and Jones Avenue. Currently, a portion of the site is developed with two single-family dwellings while the remaining of the site is vacant. Surrounding land uses include a mixture of industrial uses and single-family residences to the south. Currently, the property is zoned industrial warehousing distribution, which is intended for a range of warehousing and distribution uses. The property is in the T4 urban mixed-use neighborhood policy area, which is intended to serve, is intended to preserve, enhance, and create urban mixed-use neighborhoods with a development pattern that contains a variety of housing along with mixed-use, commercial, industrial, and even light industrial development. T4 MU areas are served by high levels of connectivity with complete street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, and existing or planned mass transit. The proposed rezone is consistent with the policy as it provides for additional residential density in an area where moderate to high-density development has been identified as appropriate. Staff's recommendation is approval of the request. This completes staff's presentation. However, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? You'll have 10 minutes.
Hello, my name is Johnny Heston. I'm a representative, I'm at 4710 Law Cabin Road.
Come on up. So wait, wait. You're at the, the microphone. So you're representing the owner, sir?
Yes, sir.
The applicant? Okay. You'll have, so just, you'll have 10 minutes to present. And then you can reserve two minutes of the 10 for your rebuttal. Okay?
Okay. We have a contract on this property to sell.
Well, state your name again and your address.
Johnny Heston. I live at 4710 Law Cabin Road, 37216. We have a contract on this property belonging to my father-in-law, and he's passed away two years ago. And it's a abandoned property, I guess, more or less now. It's just sitting there, not being used. And my mother-in-law has Alzheimer's, and we're selling this property to take care of her. And that's really all I know about it. And we have a contract on it. And it's contingent upon, you know, rezoning.
Okay. And you represent the owner, the property owner? Okay. Well, you have two minutes for your rebuttal. If there is a need for rebuttal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman, you want to go now or at the end of everything? Okay. Anyone here wish to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. And ma'am, you'll have two minutes. And please state your name and your address. Thank you.
My name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street, Nashville, Tennessee 37207. I don't know if my comments are necessarily like in opposition to it. I live about less than a mile, point seven, seven tenths of a mile away from where this proposed development is. It's obviously an underdevelopment. The staff has, I have a feeling that based off of where it was on the agenda that it's likely to be approved today. And I think that that's perfectly fine. What I want the commission to consider, there were other items on the agenda, eight, 10, excuse me, eight, 15, and 20. All of those are in the same neighborhood. And I live in that same neighborhood. And so in talking to my neighbors, what we are concerned with, I told them they didn't have to come today because the other items were deferred. But what we are concerned with is, it's already about zoned for about 20 houses. By allowing 38, that doubles the capacity of what the land is typically zoned for to allow for housing. Behind that, 190 units are proposed, plus 38, plus 158, less than a mile away, plus the rezoning of my street. That's a lot in one area. And so I guess what I'm just asking sort of on the front end, on the front end is that if the commission decides to approve it, which I'm not necessarily objecting to today, is that you consider it in conjunction with everything else that's going on in the neighborhood. And that like this sort of piece by piece of rezoning of large properties. You know, a month from now, when one that's half a mile away, you might necessarily remember that we've already approved 40 here and then 190 right behind it and 38 over here. And so I'm asking the commission, if you approve it today, I necessarily don't have an objection. I'm just asking you to be thinking about this area and what the development looks like and what that might do to the character that already exists. Because as someone who is, I'm 33 years old. I have lived there the, my entire life with the exception of going to school. And it's a quiet neighborhood. And I understand that development's happening and that's going to change. And so if it gets busier, that's okay. But we need to think about how much busier it's going to get. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Councilman? Come on up.
Thank you.
Hold on, councilman, one second.
The applicant hits two minutes for rebuttal.
And then, and then I'll call you up, councilman. I'm sorry. That was my fault.
It's okay.
It's my first mis. Oh, no rebuttal. Come on back up, councilman. I apologize. Doug, thanks.
I'm here to help.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for volunteering your time. Thank you planning staff members for working the extra hours. This is a really interesting street. This used to be a heavy industrial street. My Ohio Heights neighbors meet every third Thursday of the month. And when it comes, I kind of consider this a downzoning because, you know, I've had my IWD and IWG areas, you know, I have fears of, you know, high levels of construction and waste transfer stations and other potential threats in these areas. So when we asked our neighbors what they would like to do, they're like, well, we're fine with density because at least with the traffic flow of the 38 or 40 homes, number one, it's better than large trucks that go down there. And what I'm trying to do, because we're all working our way around, we all want more sidewalks. And sometimes the sidewalk ordinances are good. Sometimes they give us complications. But the developer here is, is from East Nashville, lives in the neighborhood, that's, that's purchasing the property, you know, from these fine people behind me. Also, we're working out a condition in a community benefits agreement with the Ohio Heights neighborhood for them to do the sidewalks. So if you know, we've had difficulties. And Doug, and Carrie, and Bob, thank you for working with my family on the corner there that was trying to do the sidewalks with ordinance kind of mixed it up. I mean, it was one of those cases, we wanted to help, but policy, we wouldn't allow it. But if this developer is allowed to build those sidewalks down there for them, then we can get rid of some other issues. And we deferred some other items that my good neighbor, Ms. Davis, no relation to me, has referred to. We've also worked out some agreements with a person with the neighborhood to, A, address our affordable, our affordability issues through writing. But more importantly, also taking up the slack of that sidewalk work that a lot of my constituents who are building homes in their neighborhood, like this gentleman who's going to be doing this project, who has it under contract, they're willing to do that also. So please approve this. It's a high industrial area. So technically, I consider this a downzoning, you know, from high-end IWD. But also, it's going to help me solve the problem that we've been trying to solve for the PIFERS at the end of that street also. So they're responsible to do the sidewalks and put the money down. Then my regular citizens don't have to do that. But we're also working out a deal with the people that bought my abandoned trailer park with the 40 units on eight acres of a abandoned trailer park we call Murder Park. They're going to be doing sidewalks along Edwin and fixing some of those issues. So also, so we're doing our best to, you know, we want the density. We want the affordability. And we're also allowing our neighbors to do, like, there's a development up there. Sam McCullough, I mean, he is, he's the king of affordability advocate in my district, who on, on his family's property on Edwin, they're doing 30 units. They did an SP. Took them over a year to get, get everything that the planners wanted, what the neighborhood wanted, the amount of trees. So we, our neighborhood's been working with you guys diligently. I know sometimes we agree to disagree, but we all love each other. And so please pass this so, A, I can help the PIFERS get their sidewalks done. And then we'll move on and we'll try to work out some of the same deals that we've done, you know, in order so my citizens don't have the burden of that sidewalk. And plus, everything is right off of Trinity Lane, which is a major corridor, you know, which we all agree, transit-friendly, highway access. So thank you for your time and thank everyone for their service.
Thank you, councilman. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And how about you, council lady? You want to go first?
Just to address the question that Ms. Davis brought up. When there are a number of different rezonings that are under the 100 and now 75 units that require a traffic impact study, or soon to be, does that traffic impact study take in recent rezonings as it looks at what the traffic count on the street is expected to be? Who answers that? Public Works?
I'll look to Lucy and everybody else. But no, I don't know that there's a way that we're doing accumulative. Or is there?
Well, when there is a traffic study required, Public Works takes in the background traffic. And I know that they asked for recent rezonings to be included in those traffic studies. I mean, if there's not a traffic study required, then I think they're, they're still aware of the traffic counts on the roads. And I, I think they can take them case by case. And if they know that there's a need in a certain area for a traffic impact study, they can still require it even if it is under 75. So I think Public Works is pretty aware of each location and what the traffic is in those areas. And they have traffic counts available that they can look at during the rezoning process to determine if they need to ask for more.
Great. And they'll take into account recently rezoning?
They do.
By asking, okay. I think that's important. I think that addresses some of her concern of, you know, will the infrastructure be improved to, to deal with all that? And it's important to, to know that those little 20 and 31s can get counted as they do the 191 where they will have to do the traffic impact study. So I think the councilman has done a great, a very creative job on this one, it sounds like. And I support him and the staff.
Commissioner Sims?
My question has to do with the two single-family dwellings that actually drove by studying up. What I can envision are these two homes that are left with multi-units on either side of them. And one of them is an empty lot, but the other actually does have a pretty nice house on it. Did anybody, what's happened to that homeowner?
Well, I mean, with this rezoning, they'll be required to put, I think, buffer yards in around the perimeter of the site. But typically, I mean, this, the policy in this area calls for the whole street to sort of change over, over time to a different zoning. So I would imagine that over time, those, those could be rezoned. It's not guaranteed. But in the meantime, if this property develops, there's landscape buffer yards that would be required surrounding this, this property.
I just wanted to go on record for asking for that homeowner because I've seen so many neighborhoods where there's a single home surrounded, living in a canyon. So, and the only other comment I have is, I do think it's important that we look at the aggregate. We're moving so fast. And in this agenda alone, we had not just these 38 potential units, but over, almost 200 units. And we all voted on it at the same time. So just, just a suggestion.
Commissioner Ains? Commissioner Tibbs?
No comment, but I'm just going to go on record as well
No comment, but I'm just going to go on record as well, just to aggregate, some kind of way, we do need to start looking at that. I remember we talked about that on Hobbs a long time ago, and we add, after a while, we were like, we're adding another one in, you know, and so just something for Public Works to, to start maybe considering as we look at these. But I think it's great, and the two single units that, like you, I was a little concerned about that, and you may have more to say about it, but that, since you say that's kind of the plan for the whole street, and it seems like it's, it's going to be an improvement, I, I support it.
Vice President.
So yeah, I was curious why there wasn't an effort to rezone the, the full, the full block. Maybe that's for the councilmen, or have you spoken with the property owners about the other property owners about trying to get those, that property rezoned as well? Councilman Davis?
It's a weird area. As you can know, the house is on IWD.
Right.
And, you know, in the golden ages of, you know, back in the day when, when, when Doug was a young codes guy, you know what I mean? You're very familiar there, Mr. Director. That's the area where, you know, you know, where, you know, a lot of wrecker trucks were back there, wrecker yards, and there was a lot of, I wouldn't call it a parent man, they did a lot of the heavy industrial printing. Also, that same street, there's a large roofing company that's right there, Collier Roofing, and then they had a warehouse further down. So it's right off Trinity Lane, so it was a big industrial. And I don't know, you know, houses can't live in, be in industrial areas, you know, but a lot of that stuff now is storage yards. And, you know, and so eventually, it will transition. But I'm, I'm not, if it's the house that your, your folks were referring to, I think, I'm not sure, I, I think it's one thing that her relatives are wanting her to move, but, but she doesn't mind the noise. I'm not 100% sure, but right now, I just know there's a busy, that's a real busy industrial street right now that's converting into, you know, something, you know, that's more manageable, even though it may seem like that's a lot of units. But compared to the traffic that's going in and out and large truck trailers back and, back and forth, you know, as you can still see, there's still a business that has those. And then there's a wrecker yard in the.
No, I was more thinking that if, if the whole area got rezoned, then you could bring the development closer to the street, which is kind of getting us more in line with, I think, the street pattern that we're looking for. So I, you know, but that's, that's not really our purview here. It might just be something that we look at going forward as. And then I think also in, in reference to Ms. Davis's comments, I drove through there this morning earlier and was thinking the same thing, that we were about to approve or recommending approval of a lot of new units in that immediate area, not just the traffic issue, but that is a lot of our remaining income affordable housing units. That's a lot of small, you know, true affordable housing that we still have, that we don't need to rebuild. And so up giving that much more attractive zoning is going to make it much more attractive for redevelopment, and I fear that we are going to push out a significant chunk. And, and I don't know what conditions we can have, but I would say that, you know, as we look at this whole project altogether, we should really think about what we're doing about, we're contributing to some very significant gentrification.
I mean, one thing about gentrification, when this is being done by the folks who live in my community, you know, I don't consider it gentrification. And then when there's empty open land, like on land on Edwin, where there's one acre backyards and close to the corridor, but we agree, I agree 100% with you, and that is, that is, that is why, you know, like with villages, big developer, the 140 that we're still looking at, you know, we're, we're identifying the nonprofit to give two acres of that land to, to build the affordable housing, because we know that the 140 units, you know, majority of that is not going to be in the affordable range.
Right.
And that's another reason why it was deferred, and also to make sure we have the infrastructure. But deeding those two acres to, and Rusty, Rusty Lawrence's group, or Eddie Latimer's group, right there, is you're, they're forced to do the affordable housing.
Right. Now, I mean, I, yes, I know that's not the item we're discussing tonight, but I noticed that.
It is on my radar.
Yeah, I, I think I was more concerned with the big, the big rezoning, or the, that we were looking at, or the.
Which, which big one? Now, the trailer park is empty already, if we're looking at.
Yeah. Well, we can, we'll, we'll see those all in a couple of weeks, but I just wanted to put it on the radar that it was something to consider.
Commissioner Hagen. Commissioner Gallow.
Commissioner Black.
Regarding the aggregation of units being rezoned, and the ability for us to take into consideration those recent rezonings, is there a way, just, I mean, I think we all have great memories, but sometimes we forget things that we voted on maybe three meetings ago, because, you know, six weeks ago. Is there a way for us to highlight that in the staff report? Like, we have a line item for zone change, existing zoning, proposed zoning.
Yes, we could do that. I would suggest that we should only do it when staff becomes aware, when staff notices the number of rezonings in a particular area over, say, a six-month period, that we bring. I wouldn't want to do, you know.
Sure.
That type of mapping for every development. But I understand what the desires, the commission and the concerns of both commission and the community. And so in areas where we have a lot of rezoning going on in a short period of time, we can include a map that shows it's pulled out a little bit further, covers a larger area. And, and what we'll probably do is, now just thinking out loud, is look at the, the street network and how it funnels into particular areas and include those areas, not just indiscriminate, you know, mile around it. We'll look at where that development is coming in, where additional housing is coming in, and then look at how it's affecting the traffic pattern in the area and pull back. And we'll know, because we'll have the traffic studies that Public Works is asking for, for the other additional traffic, or developments that are occurring in the area.
I think that'd be immensely helpful for the commission to make a sound decision. So you mentioned maybe six months, so six months going back, and then obviously, any proposed plans that are currently before the commission would be included, or could be included in that too. So for example, if those items had not been deferred today, we would have heard them all, and maybe would have been obvious to us all that they were in the same area, but maybe not.
Yeah, I think we could do ones that, where we've received applications and are pending. We could, we could include those too. Sometimes, I'll be frank with you, that because you're not seeing them yet means they're not fully baked, which means we don't really know exact numbers. Oftentimes, that number's fluid through the process, but we can give you the ones that, at least what the applicants are applying for at that time.
And it doesn't have to be, I understand, sometimes when it's really preliminary, you don't really have a good idea that's something that's actually going to come to fruition, but at least ones that are on our agenda.
Well, and we'll know what the request is for, and we can at least show you those numbers.
Thank you. Good suggestions. Commissioner Diaz?
I agree with everything the commissioner said, so I would make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
So second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, item 26 has been adopted. And we're on item 27, last one.
Item number 27 is a zone change request to change zoning from RS5 to R6A. The property is highlighted in red. This is 1015 44th Avenue North, located on the west side of 44th Avenue North. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Current zoning is RS5. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving. This policy is intended to enhance urban residential neighborhoods that provide for more housing choices with improved pedestrian and vehicular connectivity. The proposal in front of you is roughly about 700 feet from a corridor going northbound, and surrounded by a mixture of one and two-family residential units. Also, this property is located adjacent to transit. Transit does run along 44th Avenue North. Since the policy does support more housing choices, and given the location close to a corridor and along a transit line, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. We'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Thanks for coming down today. You'll have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal.
Okay. My name is Jeff Miller. I live at 147 Brookfield Avenue, 37205, and the owner of Jay Miller Enterprises, which we bought the property under. When I bought the property, it was, actually had a non-conforming use duplex on it, went to the process with zoning to see if we could possibly build two units on it, and we couldn't, and it lost its status. Then met with zoning and the planning desk, and they thought it would be a good candidate. I kind of did too, just for the feel that it has around the nations. I've done some stuff on Kentucky, which is right around the corner from it, with its Centennial being right there, and also south on 44th. Just the feel of the street right there felt like it would be an acceptable candidate. And I met with the council person, and he, he was, felt comfortable after meeting with him, so, so pursued it. And then on the planning, so I'll just wait to hear what others have to say.
Thank you, sir. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come up. Thanks for coming down. You'll have two minutes, and state your name and your address.
Yes, my name, my name is Eldridge Ronnie Simmons, 912 43rd Avenue North. I live just east of the 45th Avenue. I'm a member of tomorrow's Hope neighborhood association. Now, we had a meeting on Tuesday night, and the members asked me to come down and speak on their behalf, that they are, they disapprove it. They don't, they don't believe it, and they don't want it. And one of the neighbors that lived down the street from where she was, her concerns was the runoff from the water. This opened up the doors for our neighborhood, for the nations, because if you look at the nation, we're just, we're just east of the nations. The, the single-family lots over there have eventually just evolved. It's just totally taken over, duplexes, triplexes, multi-units on one lot. So we, we're actually against it because, in fact, we don't want to open up our area for that type of development, because we basically have a lot of single-family homes. The lots are like 150, 50 by 150 feet. So if we start now with this one project, there's another project coming down with us, a possibility of 100, well, 33 condos being built just up the street from this area. So we're concerned about what's going to happen after we open up the door for this, this development. Just like you were saying, why would people in the neighborhood with single-family homes want someone to come in and put two homes on one lot? Just such you made the statement earlier, just like they said about the development in East Nashville. Nashville's growing. We know this. But what does it cost us as affordable homes? I live on a home now. I own two pieces of property, but my house was affordable. If some comes into that area now, it's going to be at least $300,000. And no one, we'll have to either move, and no one else will be able to move into the community, except for the ones that can afford $300,000 homes. So we, that's why we disapprove it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Opposition? Two minutes for rebuttal, sir?
Yes, the, I mean, the purpose was here is that actually it's historically had a duplex on it, so I don't think we're adding any more density than historically has been there. As far as the runoff goes, I, I know it's, it's, it's on a hill. I mean, I've done development before, and generally, in this case particularly, it's, it's a non-salvageable, non-havable duplex. It, it really has to be torn down. And, you know, through permitting and metro water, we'll leave, I'm sure it'll be a much better position than it is now as far as water mitigation. Thanks.
Seeing no other wishing to speak, we'll close this item for public hearing. And Commissioner Hagen, do you want to go first? No? Oh, okay.
Not really. I'm looking at the map, and it looks to me, can we, can we go to the zone map? Okay. To see where the community character, I mean, I mean, what, what the zoning around it is. Okay, so we have RS5 seems to be consistently across the neighborhood, correct?
There is RS5 to the north and to the east. We have some IR zoning to the south, as well as CS as you continue south on 44th Avenue North.
What is CS?
Commercial service.
I thought so, but okay. Okay, so, but the size of the lot is consistent, pretty much all the way down this 44th. It looks like most of the lots are about the same size.
About the same size. You might have an outlier too, here and here, but generally speaking, that's the same size.
Okay. And is the, is this?
That's an alley.
Okay, so behind the alley, is that an alley?
This one does not have an alley, if you want to take a look.
Okay. Okay. But, but if you look at, say, 54, 55, 56, 57, all the other lots, they're also around the same size, and they're all still RS.
RS5.
Five. That's correct. Okay. I'm going to reserve judgment and listen. I, I'm, I'm going to listen.
Commissioner Gallow.
Well, I, I mean, I, I see what, I see where everybody's coming from on this. The staff, I certainly understand their, their reason, and it's consistent with, with the plan, totally the neighborhood, and keeping the rhythm of the street and the rhythm of the neighborhood is, is important as well. I just don't know that we, I tend to think that we have to go along with the policy and the staff's recommendation. That's kind of where I am.
Commissioner Black.
So the applicant, I'm guessing, is correct in that there was already a duplex on it, so you wouldn't be, like you said, you wouldn't be adding density to it. But by changing this zoning, I mean, to the neighbor's point, are you, are we making it more likely for the houses down the street to be rezoned to something else? More density?
I will address your first item you talked about. It was a duplex before, it has now become a duplex no longer, according to the codes department, so they have made that designation that is single-family only. And then for every other reason that we look at, we would take a look as, as they come in individually upon the character of the neighborhood and the policy at that time, and, and just in general, how far it is away from transit and the corridor. So we do look at each one individually.
So as Letitia mentioned, I would just add on that this is a T4 neighborhood. I'm afraid my mic is. I think my mic is the culprit that sets all the mics, makes them unhappy. It's T4 neighborhood evolving, and so if you look at the intensity within the transect categories that we have in Nashville next, T4 is beginning to skew to some of the more intense urban neighborhoods. And staff, imagine this to be something of a transition. I mean, there is a bit of a patchwork to the south and to the west, and then, of course, you have the, the neighborhood maintenance to the east. And so I think from our perspective, given the evolving policy that it is T4, we thought the, the additional mixture of housing types was appropriate in this location. That is a specific policy goal within this, within this transect. And the other thing I would mention is, again, that we would see this as something of a, of a transition. I mean, it's certainly a unique location, because it is right next to commercial services, and it is next to the industrial zoning. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that if we approve this, like you said, the next proposed rezoning that comes in this neighborhood, we're not going to rubber stamp it as to say more density, because this is a, a unique situation.
We do look at them individually. As Letitia mentioned, the primary factors that we look at, of course, are the policy. We look at how far away we are from a corridor. We look at adjacent seat of transit, and we look at the, the goals, I would say, for the housing types and those mixture of housing types. Those tend to be the factors that we try to focus on. And then, of course, whether or not there is existing infrastructure like an alley. So this is R6A, so even though there isn't an alley here, there are going to be design standards here that aim to improve the pedestrian environment. And so, again, we look at all of those together and weigh whether or not it meets policy. And in this, in this instance, we, our view is yes, but as you say, we look at each one of these individually.
I mean, I'll say, if I'm looking at this particular piece of land, I mean, it does seem appropriate to approve the proposed rezoning, but I'm very concerned, and I, I acknowledge the neighbor's concern about opening the rest of the neighborhood up. And I know there's an evolving policy, but, I mean, people have neighborhoods that maybe they don't want to evolve overnight. So, and I'm heartened to hear that our policy is to look at everything in an individual perspective.
I'd just like to add something. I just want to remind the commission that it's a small area of neighborhood evolving policy, so the majority of the neighborhood is maintenance. And so you're really looking at the few parcels right in, right in here. And so that's really showing the transition from the industrial restrictive zoning to the neighborhood and trying to encourage a better transition.
If that's helpful.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I think that's worth pointing out to the, the public, that the policy really restricts how much this can go on in this neighborhood, and it literally is just, well, this, the area that you see here, which seems to be one side of 44th and the, the small section of 45th and Clover, and that's it. That the rest of it is neighborhood maintenance, so. That the rest of it is neighborhood maintenance, so.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you. That was really helpful, Anita, because I was starting to, you know, I had all these questions about, you know, like, how could we rezone all those other small lots to RS, RS, or R6A? But I'm assuming that this policy was in place so that they could consolidate and create some, something more dense there, or something like that, but, I mean, just with this new information, or not new information, but with seeing this map, I think I'm more comfortable with the, the rezoning now, so I'm in support of it as well.
Counsel lady.
Thank you. I appreciate seeing the, the differentiation between the neighborhood evolving and the neighborhood maintenance, because I was going to ask, why, why is it neighborhood evolving? So, it makes more sense for just that one little piece, and I hope it's, it's clear to the neighbors that, that lighter gray area that's called NM would not be given the same treatment or consideration, so this doesn't start the dominoes for everything. So, I was, I was not very supportive, when I was thinking that entire area was neighborhood evolving, because if, if the neighbors wanted to stay that way, it should be maintenance. And it looks like the vast majority of it is. One, one question I just want to clarify, my remembrance be, is that when something was a duplex, like within the past two years, you can reprove that status and, and still have it. So, can you kind of walk through that process and how it applies here?
That's a very good question. When I went and talked to the Codes Department regarding this, because it was, it was, it was questioned if it was still duplex-eligible, it, it was determined by the Codes Administrator that it was not, it was no longer duplex-eligible. I don't have that exact timeframe on my hands for you, but it was determined by them that it's no longer, and it's single-family residential only.
Counsel, it would have had to have been used as a duplex when it was, it would have to have been permitted as a duplex at the time that the zoning allowed it, and then the zoning changed for it to be a legally non-conforming duplex.
Gotcha.
So, the fact that even, even if they had used it as a duplex within the last two years, but, in fact, never gained permits necessary to make it a legal duplex, then they, it wouldn't have mattered.
That's, that's helpful as well. So, that, that avenue is not there, but this, this avenue is. And I guess, in general, we tend to support this, like at, at corners, as opposed to mid-block. So, that was kind of one question I had, was, I mean, it, it makes me a little nervous to take an RS zone and, and start punching R6s into it randomly. And I have actually turned people down who've asked to do that in my district, because the neighborhood worked really hard to get that, that RS zoning, and as, as the neighbor mentioned, you know, if you start making Swiss cheese out of it, you've, you've kind of got nothing at that point. So, can I have just a little more conversation about, again, is it just because it's neighborhood evolving that you're okay with a mid-block duplex?
Let me, let me say, too, that, and there was some discussion going on, that if you tried to do the same type of rezone for the other side of 44th, then, and I'd ask Anita to tell me if she agreed with me, that it would probably take a policy change to go along with that...
Okay.
As opposed to over here in the neighborhood evolving section.
Okay, so that's the significant defining difference between those. Okay, that, that answers all my questions. I think because it is, it is, this is neighborhood evolving, where most of the neighbors live is neighborhood maintenance, and that's a good protection for them, I will support this particular one. Thank you for the answers.
And just a clarification for the public, a policy change has to come to the planning commission.
Right.
So, just keep that in mind.
And the council.
And council. Yes, ma'am.
No, not on the policy change. The policy change just comes here.
That's right.
Okay.
But there's a, another, another community outreach portion that goes along with that in conversation, and we take those very seriously and make sure that it's best, because we got these policies through community conversation to begin with, as we went through Nashville Next process.
Gotcha.
So, we don't take a policy change, not that we take rezonings lightly, but...
Right.
It's, it's another process that would be added.
And so, the community has said they want the lighter gray area to stay RS, and we're not disturbing that. That's important. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sims.
First of all, thank you, Anita, for that explanation. It helped a lot. And then, I want to thank you particularly for representing Tomorrow's Hope. It's a great neighborhood association. I think I agree with staff's recommendation, but I really encourage you to keep an eye on it as a true neighborhood advocate, and if the other things start changing, you know where to find us.
Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Dibbs?
I don't have anything new to add. I think that counsel, consulate, she actually hit the one. This definitely changed my mind, though, because I wasn't going to be, not for it, because, you know, it's changing the context of what this neighborhood is, is really fighting for, in a sense, but I understand the policy, I, I can be supportive of it.
Vice chair.
I don't have anything new to add either, but I am still struggling with the mid-block change. I, it just looks strange to me. I mean, I understand the rationale for it, it's just, it's not sitting so well, but...
Well, maybe we need someone else to make the motion.
I'm not making the motion.
Who wants to make the motion?
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. No no's? It's adopted. We are now on to... Let's see here. Which items are we on? Historic. Just that, this is along with parks today. We opened Fort Nashville, and it was, I encourage everyone listening and everyone here to please go by and visit it. It is really, turned out to be really nice, so, that's all. Excellent. Very exciting. Been waiting a while for that, yeah. Parks?
So, I'm sure you guys are all aware about the Greer Stadium process that's been going on. So, the board decided to schedule the meeting, whenever it comes to the board, to actually hold a public hearing, so that people have, you know, time to come and express their feelings about it. So, we don't know the schedule yet or anything like that, but in the future, just wanted to make that public, that we will hold a public hearing for that.
Executive committee report. I don't think we have anything. And what's going on in the council? Passing budgets?
Passing budgets. The vice mayor has formed an ad hoc committee to continue to consider the short-term rental bill that has been pending for, since this, this body heard it, just to try to take into account the possible ramifications from the state level, and also the possibility of having support of the web, web platforms in enforcing what we need, which is kind of a key piece of it. And also, now that we've gotten recommendations from the consultant who met with many members of the stakeholders and the Codes Committee, and has made some recommendations on how to, how to kind of revamp code, so that they can be better equipped to, to do some of the enforcement, and now that we've got the, the software company working on, kind of trolling, trolling the, the website, and, and also serving as a one-stop-shop phone, phone number to call for, for complaints. So, that group has 90 days to try to do our, our work. It will be challenging, and we probably will be meeting weekly, so maybe I'll let you know in two weeks where we, where we're going.
Thank you, council lady. I always save the best for last, I guess, Doug. Maybe not.
Well, the, one thing that I, I wanted to make y'all aware of, because we're, we're still dealing with a lot of issues, whether it's affordable housing, or whether it's short-term rentals, but also Music Row, as we continue to, to try and, and give some meaning to the Music Row overlay, that we've tried to do historic preservation over there in a, in a new way. Transferable development rights is something that we're starting to study, and we have an RFP out, I think we're in the middle of, Bob, the, have we already submitted our scoring on the RFP?
We did it that week. Submitted that today.
Okay. So, we've put an RFP out to ask for an economic study done of what transferable development rights within the Music Row area, how that might work. How, we don't want to create too much development rights to be transferred, otherwise, they don't really hold any value. And we want to make sure that we create enough receiving sites that can use those TDRs, so that there's a market for them. But in our early analysis, we figured out real quickly that that takes an economist, not a planner or a lawyer, to figure out what's the right balance. And so, that's what the RFP was for, and we hope to enter into a contract real soon to be able to have them on board to help us work that out, because we think that's going to be a great tool, we hope it'll be a great tool, to add value to some of the historic properties in Music Row. And the way that that would work is if you had a historic property, and instead of developing on that historic property, you sell off the development rights that you would normally have, and somewhere, let's say, in the downtown area, needs those additional development rights as a receiving site, then they could purchase them. Then, the property owner in Music Row is still seeing the value and the increased value of their property, and at the same time, we're getting the, the density in areas where we want it, but the preservation where we want it as well.
Are we allowed to do that? Does the state allow?
Yes. Yes, I believe that we are allowed to do that. I, I'm sure the lawyers will let me know real quickly. Well, let me say this, we already do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a common...
So, we, we already have it in the downtown area, and we're already using it today, and in Gulch.
Well, we can always, if we need to, and if there's a lot of questions, we can have a public workshop, like we've done on low-income housing, and some of the, you know, more intense and complex issues, so, and I know the staff will work with us to educate the commission on anything if it moves forward, and educate us. So, I appreciate that, Doug. Anything else, Mr. Director?
I could go on for hours, but I suspect y'all are ready to get...
Well, yes, and thank you, and we don't want to have to cut you off. Just also to remind you guys, still in summer vacation season, so make sure that if you're not going to be at a commission meeting, make sure you let the staff know, Kelly know. I know she appreciates it. I'm in that...
Then now it would be the time to tell you that I won't be at the next meeting?
Yes. Thank you.
Me either.
Anything else? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.GO.